Good morning, everybody. Welcome to September sixteenth, twenty twenty five School Board of Manatee County Workshop. I want to officially call this meeting to order. There are no real agenda amendments, so we'll skip to public comments, which I do not believe we have any. So we'll jump right into our presentations for the morning. First presentation is Manatee School of the Arts and Sciences, twenty five, twenty six, School Improvement Plan. Welcome.
Hi.
Superintendent, do you want to mention anything before we give it to them?
Good morning.
Morning.
As required per statute, any charter school in the state that had two consecutive letter grades of a D are required to present to the sponsor, which would be members of the board. And so we've invited MSAS here today to share their school improvement plan and presentation. Dr. Valerie Hayer, who is the coordinator of our charter schools in the district, will introduce the MSAS administrators.
Thank you, Dr. Breslin. Next to me here, we have Clinton Jones, who is the principal of Manatee School of Arts and Sciences, a K five charter school here in Manatee County School District. And behind me, Board Chair Jim Brand at Manatee School of Arts and Sciences. Clinton, take it away.
Sorry, first time ever doing one of these, so.
It's all good.
You should have an envelope with three pieces in it. Just first, the official SIP looks, has this cover here. So that is the full official SIP. The presentation, which is just a representation of the PowerPoint itself, should look like that right there. That's what I'll be going over mostly here. And then a second, or a third piece is this called CLI Partnership Agreement. And I'll be getting to that. It's part of our plan to get everything back on track and going well. So just a little bit about MSAS. We've been around since nineteen ninety seven. I believe we were the first charter school in Manatee County. We may have been one of the first, or if the first on the west coast. So we've been around for quite a while. I've been with the school for five, six years. It's hard to keep track, maybe even more. And when we took, when I took over as principal, I was a history teacher and a science teacher before that. We had a big culture shift that we wanted to make. And so we spent the first several years working on that, making it a place where parents and kids felt welcomed, safe, and just wanted to be there. And we've really succeeded on that because the, one of the things I love about our school is our kids. The kids that graduated from fifth grade last year were kids I had in kindergarten. They stuck with us. And I mean, the majority of our kids do that. But now we've hit a crossroads where we can't just be a safe, welcoming place. We have to push the envelope with getting these kids prepared and ready for middle and high school. And that's where, over the last two years, we had a little bit of a struggle. We have a plan to fix that, and we're working really closely with Dr. Hayer and with the district in general, and some other resources so that we can accomplish that. And I'm not a hundred percent sure on mission and statement and all that. If you want me to read it verbatim, it's here. That right there is kind of the just of what we are. A safe, loving environment for our kids, where our teachers, parents, and kids feel seen, heard, welcomed, and they can excel. And that's the, that last part, that excelling part, is what we're really focused on right now. Because when it comes to things, problems in our school's behavior, that's not one of them. We, we really have to reach a couple of demographics that we're really focused on, and I'll get to that.
Do you mind, just if I interrupt? Will you advance the slide?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
There we go. Sorry about that.
You're fine.
So this is our academic data for the last three years. There's some good points, there's some not so good points. You can see that it's twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. It compares district, state, and school. So if you jump back to twenty-three on ELA achievement, now achievement is how many of our kids are third, scored a level three or higher? So back in twenty-three, the score was about thirty. We've jumped to a forty-two. So we have, we're still behind when it comes to where we are versus the district and the state, but we had a twelve-point gain over those three years. So if we continue that, we're looking to really be in a good spot for those kids that are on grade level and pushing them above. When it comes to, in this data right here, I'm going to flash between one, this page and another one. So you can kind of compare this page here to this page, which is the next one. And it kind of just gives more of a breakdown on those data points that I'm referring to. So I'll go back to that. Grade three achievement, we started out at a twenty-eight. We went to a forty-six, so we had a one-point drop there from the previous year, but we've still made quite a bit of gains over the last two, three years, and we're, we're working on that. Now, here's where our issue is with our learning gains and our lowest twenty-five percent. So the learning gain is when we're trying to get a student who is at a level two to cross those borders to, to score a learning gain. And we've been bringing them up. They have been making gains. However, they have to make a certain amount of gains for it to count. And we have been running right up to it, and we missed those marks several times over the, over the last couple of years. So that is one of our big pushes to try to make that more rigorous and get those students to cross those boundaries to achieve those learning gains. And our lowest twenty-five percentile is in the same, is in the same boat there, where you can see that there's actually no data on those two right there for twenty-four, twenty-five because we did not have enough students to even score data points.
I have a question real quick, if you don't mind. Okay, on this page, the far right.
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty twenty-three, ELA learning gains, there's no data. Can you, did I miss that? I was trying to find.
I believe, I believe that's the year that we changed over from FAST, and so there was no data because nobody got data, state, district. Nobody received it for those certain buckets. So, yeah.
Okay.
And then math, which has actually crept up on our radar. We were doing very well. We were making some really good gains when it came to math in twenty-three, going to thirty-seven. However, we slipped this year. And so we have also addressed how we're going to attack that problem and, and fix that as well. Because at first, we thought we were on our way up. We were doing what we needed to do. So we've got that to work with the learning gains and the math achievement. Now, when it came to learning gains, we actually increased from last year. We went from a thirty-two to a thirty-four. That's good, but it's not enough. We need to, we need to be more rigorous and we need to push harder. Math, twenty-five, lowest percentile, again, we didn't have enough of our bottom twenty-five percent score in that grade, in that band to even register data for us.
Mr. Jones, is that number for the state, is that still ten students minimum?
Yes.
That you need. So you don't, your lowest quartile is not even ten kids?
It was nine last year.
Nine, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, that was, that was rough. We had a really good group and we had nine kids and, yeah, doesn't count.
Okay, no, I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah, yeah, it's still nine students. I actually even wrote that in there on that, just to remind me. And so that also then played into a part with science because that was our fifth grade class. Our fifth grade class was the class that only had nine students. So there's no data for them in twenty-four. Yes.
So total number of students that you have here are?
As of today, a hundred and eight. Yeah.
And twenty twenty-five year was how many?
It was, we started with a hundred and fifteen and we ended with about a hundred and four, five? Yeah.
Okay.
I think that fifth grade class started out at around twelve or thirteen kids. And then because we had several siblings or, and whatnot, we lost a few together. And so we dropped. Yeah. This year, we, our, our grades are all stat, are filled with the prerequisite number of kids, which is really good. So we're looking forward to that. So this data here is just the breakdown over the last three years. One of the shining points that I want to show in here, besides our jump in ELA achievement and our big jump in grade three achievement, was also the, the very bottom, our ELLs. Three years ago, we were at a forty-five. Now we're on par with the state and district in six, at sixty-three. And we have a large population of Spanish-speaking and ELL students who we've really been trying to work to bring up and, and get to where they need to be. The next slides, these next slides are just kind of putting that into numbers. And you can see MSAS for, on the ELA, ELA achievements, over the last three years, we've gained twelve points. The district, we gained five. Florida as a whole gained six. On ELA achievements, gains, our school gained eighteen points over the last three years. Manatee County, three. Florida, six. Here's our ELA learning gains. This is that area, again, where we are, where, this is where we're, we're putting our efforts in. We dropped eight points. The district dropped one point, and Florida held even compared to the last couple of years. And you also see that there's no data for twenty-three. There's that blank area there. Again, going back to, that data was not available because of the FAST change. In our ELA twenty-five percent, you can see that there is no data there. We did not have enough kids register that scored data for us. Manatee County held equal, and Florida as a whole dropped one point. The next page is the math breakdown there. And you can see that we dropped over the last three years, a total of one point in math achievement gains. When it comes to math learning gains, we actually increased two points. And then when it comes to math, lowest twenty-five percentile, again, we did not have enough students that hit the mark to score data points. And then this is the last breakdown slide, I believe. This is our science achievement gains. This was one that was a real big, a real big focus for us last year that we were looking at. From twenty-three to twenty-five, we've had a ten-point slide. We started out strong. We had some issues in twenty-four where we went through a time of about three or so months where our fifth-grade science teacher was not available and wasn't around, and we had subs. And we were fighting that battle. We got it fixed. However, we also then found that the, the grade itself just, for a lot of success, there's got to be that connection with that teacher. And we did not have that connection with that teacher in that specific grade level in fifth grade there. But we've got that taken care of this year as well. And so you can see the science achievement, ten points down. And our ELA achieving proficiency gains, we jumped eighteen points over the last three years. To put this in a kind of another perspective, last year, we missed, we, we missed being a C school by one point last year. This year, we missed it by two, maybe we slid one more or two more points. So we are right on the cusp. We are right on the cusp. Two years ago, we were actually thinking, we were shooting, and we were getting so close to a B. And then this came around and we had to reevaluate, like, what we were doing and how, because we were very, we were very excited. And then we got last year's data. And so, yeah, we've made a lot of changes. And then that's what these slides are, how we're making these changes, what we're doing. Because we know the data, we know what we gotta do. We've been really working closely with the district. So when it comes to enhancing our ELA achievement and learning gains, there's some key areas that we've got to focus on. We got to focus on boosting reading comprehension. We've got kids, they read. They read very well. But what we're finding is there's a disconnect between reading and the comprehension piece. And so we are working, we are dedicating more time in the classroom to reading comprehension. We are working with our parents. Every single conversation that we have with parents nowadays goes back to, yes, you read with your children at night, but you've got to be asking the who, what, when, where, why? Ask those higher-order questions. Get them to think about why this person in this story felt this way. And see if, and get them to get that comprehension piece elevated. We've got to work on our writing proficiency, which we have dedicated time into our schedule this year, protected time for writing and typing. Because one of the problems we saw was when they go to take these tests, a lot of times they have to answer questions. And these kids today, they don't grow up with a computer on their desk. They grow up with a pad in their hands. And there is a significant difference between typing on a computer and typing on the pad. And so they're slow and they're not confident. And so those are one of the things that we're working on, handwriting and typing and being confident in what you're doing there. That way, you can then take what you know and put it on the test. Because we come across it a lot where you, you, you should have known that, and they do, and they can tell you it. But they can't put it on the, in the test form. They were having trouble. Increasing academic vocabulary is always a thing that we're working on. Kids know what add means, but they have trouble when it says more than, or Johnny has less than, and what's the difference? So that's the academic vocabulary that we're really pushing on. And that really, that starts in our younger grades, too. And so making sure that within ELA, we are really putting that time in building that academic vocabulary, not only with our kids, but with our parents, because a lot of this happens at home as well. Because when kids are one or two grade levels behind, the home learning is key. And they've got to, it's got to continue there as well. Promoting confidence and participation, this is one of our key areas. This is one of the reasons we have a lot of struggle, is the confidence. Last year, I sat down with a kid, and this kid, he's, he is bright, he's, he's with it. And he is sharp as a tack, but he scored a level one. And we're like, why? What happened? I, I got nervous and then I choked, so I just started dotting. His confidence level, his test-taking confidence level is not there. And so working with Dr. Hayer, one of the things that we talked about a lot was stamina. Building testing stamina, which is something I had really not thought of. And so getting them used to a testing environment where you have to be focused and locked in for an extended amount of time, but then also having that confidence to get there. And so one of the things we do is we have a, a class that meets every so, every couple of weeks where we build its, its confidence and test-taking strategies. And how do you deal with it when you, as a child, start to get nervous and flustered? What are some things you can do? What are some things that won't bother the rest of the class? What are things that will refocus you? And so we've been talking with our kids and, and working on those things with them. We have centerstone coming in every week, doing group work with our kids, trying to build that confidence level in them as well. And then ensuring academic rigor. This goes back to our teachers and making sure that as a teacher, your heart wants to help those kids. And sometimes your heart then kind of simplifies it. And that, that's great, but it doesn't do the kids service when we, when they need to be on a third-grade level, but you're teaching them at a second-grade level. And so the academic rigor piece is making sure that we, as teachers, are understanding and focusing on the level in which we have to teach to, and then scaffolding and building them up and bringing them up to that level, not dumbing it down, per se. These, this next slide here, now this.
Before you move to the next slide.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you just, you said something that piqued my attention.
Yeah.
And then I went looking for it. But you're absolutely right. Like, our job is so much easier when we've got support at home, right? So do you, are you doing now, as part of the improvement plan, finding ways to engage the parent or parents at home?
Yes, absolutely. Because, so over the last several years, there's been this, this, this lag of kids that were born four or five years ago in social, social and education. They missed a lot of time, some of them, online school and things like that. Trying to bring that gap and close that gap is one of the big things. And when you've got a kid, I mean, we've got fourth graders who are testing at a level one, right? That's three years' worth of gaps that we've got to fill. As a teacher, that is, that's insanely hard. Those gaps can be filled, but it is, it's, it's everything. It's the school, it's home, it's any extracurriculars that they might be able to get involved with that do that. So we're working with our parents, and we have, communication with our parents is one of our key things. That was part of the plan years ago. We've got to talk with our parents. We've got to keep them informed on what's going on in the classroom. We've got to help them with resources on what they can do at home. And we've got to be there to help them because, I mean, let's face it. If anybody in here remembers teaching Common Core math to one of your kids, I had to go onto Google and I had to look at, okay, how do I got to? I remember how my teacher taught me, but it's not that way. And a lot of those parents were in that boat. And so with Title One, we do parent nights. With this third party that I'll talk about here in a little bit, they're going to come in and they're going to help us work with our parents and provide resources and other parent nights, trying to help our parents learn what resources are available, how to watch for it, how to implement it at home. Because one of the other problems we struggle with is home time is home time. They've got to be with their family and building that, that community and that, that social piece there, too. And so we've got to find that nice balance of, you can't assign five hours of homework to a third grader every night. The parents burn out, the kids burn out, and so then the parents get frustrated. So our communication with our parents is very open, and we are trying with, to help them be better situated to handle that extra workload that does come with it.
Yeah, this is just, you may already be doing this, but connect your families with Soren Four once a month?
Yes.
At the Bishop Museum?
Yep.
Because they, they'll walk away with resources.
Yep.
Materials and books.
We, we work with, well, now my brain, you know, goes flighty because I get nervous. But, I mean, we, we work with FELT, Feeding, Feeding and Speed Tummies, Mothers Helping Mothers. And I cannot remember the company right now or the group right now, but every year, they donate hundreds and hundreds of hundreds of books and resources to us, and we just hand them out. But we're also, what our focus is, is besides just handing them out those resources, showing them how to use it.
Yeah, that's.
And how to do it. Because again, we get it, and we gave them the resources, and then, yeah, we read through it, and he read it fine. He read it amazing. He doesn't have a reading problem, but did he understand it? He comprehend it? Oh, I didn't ask those comprehension piece questions. And so that's part of the education of the parents as well. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Do you have a reading coach?
Yes, we do. Because of, because of the score from last year, we actually have a resource teacher, a dedicated person. Because of, because of the score from last year, we actually have a resource teacher, a dedicated person who's highly qualified, reading endorsed, I mean, kids absolutely adore him. And he goes in every single day, sees our bottom twenty-five percent in our bubble kids, absolutely for sure. Works with them, pulls them, helps them with individual, like almost one-on-one. Usually it's one to two, three kids at a time possibly, working with them. And he also works with the rest of the group too, so he works with them. And then he just kind of stays and he's in classes every day, just going to every single class. Now, we're a small school, so we only have K through five, one class of each. So he gets to see every single kid, every single day and work with them. And then in our, built into our schedule, so for example, state says that we need an hour, ninety minutes uninterrupted for ELA. Okay, so we have that. We also have an additional thirty minutes within the day that we can do additional ELA. And then on top of that, we have an additional hour that we split between ELA or math, depending on where the need of the individual kids are. So for example, in ELA, we could potentially be getting an hour and a half, thirty, so that's two hours, almost three hours of additional ELA work. And so our resource teacher helps out with that.
So you had that individual last year as well?
Yes, we've had that, this is the second year we've had that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, because the data that I have, I had the district pull your data for last year.
Yeah.
And then your enrollment for this year and your enrollment for third grade as of nine eight is twenty-four third graders, eleven kindergartners, sixteen first, twenty second, like you're saying. They're small individ, they're small classes.
And that's actually one of the biggest classes, those numbers are bigger than historically for us, yeah.
Right, yeah. Last year, third grade reading, thirty percent of your third graders, which was, I don't know how many you had last year. I'm guessing probably somewhere around twenty was thirty percent at level one.
I can't remember exactly how many we had third graders, let me think about my fourth grade, because it's pretty much my fourth grade. What number does it have for fourth grade?
It has.
This year?
This year you have twenty-three.
Okay, so yeah, it would be twenty to twenty-five.
So that would be about right.
Yeah.
So you probably, right, okay, all right.
Because we, most of those students remained, there's a few new in that, in that grade band, but most of them remained.
Okay.
But yeah, we are, we are really trying to take any additional time. I mean, years ago, we had art, hour block of art and things like that. We have, unfortunately, we've had to redo our schedule so that we can hit these things that are really important and tackle those problems. And we've made a lot of movements within the school too, with our teachers. Because in certain grade bands, and I think I might be into that. Yeah, coming up, it, it shows a couple of teachers that were in our lower grades and we've actually moved those to the upper grades to get more of an impact because they, they were outstanding in what they did with second grade and a few other ones. Sorry, did that answer your question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I also had a question.
Yeah.
Like Mr. Kennedy, I wanted to know more about the parent involvement, are you going to discuss that further later?
It's kind of just an ongoing, that, that one is just, that is a struggle constantly for us. We're a Title One school. We are a hundred percent drop off and pickup, no bus, we have some walkers, we have, I mean, I would say low parent engagement and volunteerism on the school itself. But our parents care, our parents, you know, they do. It's really a lot about, we have generational parents too. They went to our school twenty years ago or ten years ago and now their kid or their grandkid goes here. And it's, it's a constant battle of trying to give them the resources and tools they need in this new, I mean, it's, it's daunting for a thirty or forty year old parent or whatnot, or twenties, whatever it is, to have to go back and try teaching their kid as well. Any of the grade levels, like I said, when I did it with my son, I had to go back to Google just to, to refresh it, to freshen up. And I'm a teacher, I just, it was not my particular area that I excelled in. But problem is, is a lot of these parents are working two jobs. I talked to one yesterday that we've been working very closely with, she doesn't get home until eight or nine o'clock at night. So that means she doesn't get to sit and do, check the homework. It's a grandfather who does that with the kid. The grandfather's, you know, he does what he can and does his best he can. But a lot of these kids are taking care of themselves or in challenging situations. That doesn't really allow for home education to happen how I remember it. You know, how I remember it was sitting down at the dinner table with mom and dad over dinner, doing work. And not, a lot of these kids don't have that. And so we're just trying to provide those services. We have aftercare services that we do at the school where kids can stay. It's ran by teachers and they can stay. And if they've got, they need extra work, they can sit with teachers and do extra work and accomplish, accomplish it that way too.
I, I taught Title One, so I do understand the challenges.
Yeah.
I was just kind of interested in how, what it looks like, are you getting buy-in? Are more parents becoming involved or is that still a big struggle?
I, I, yeah, I would not say more parents are becoming involved. They're, they're interested and they're worried, but I think a lot of them don't feel equipped or have the ability to like, feel like they're able to provide that level of support at home to the kids. That, it's honestly, that's been one of our real big struggles over, and I'm not, not in just over the last two or three years, but I mean, ever since I've been there, like just trying to get that parent involvement. We get a lot of parent involvement when we do fun things. We had amazing art show, a huge art gallery, this entire room size art gallery, it was amazing. We had a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty parents show up or something like that, that's huge for us. We did Halloween events and we did some other things, we did some, those things. But when we did a reading event, twenty people, that kind of stuff. So that's, but again, that kind of falls on us though too. How do we pull off those reading events and make it where we can get that, that buy-in from the parents? And that's what these guys are really going to help us with. So I keep talking about this, this is the children's, okay, Children's Literacy Initiative. It's a third-party nonprofit that they come in and what's going to happen is once a week for the rest of the school year, they're going to have a, a person come who is a teacher and they're going to work individually with every single one of our teachers, with me, my staff. They're also going to be working with our kids and they're going to be working with our parents by doing parent events and things like that. Trying to provide professional development for the parents or for the teachers, support for the parents, data for me and guidance on like, okay, here's our data, where do we go with it? And how do we tackle it?
Well, you know, that, that's always been a struggle like nationwide with, with certain populations of kids when their parents do work two and three jobs. And you know, if somebody can crack the code on that, they'll be millionaires. But, but yeah, so, but I just wanted to know what, what your steps were taking.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen a significant improvement and I don't know, I don't know what the answer is on that. We just, we're doing what we can and trying to figure out anything else that we can do to help. Because I mean, we got, we got fantastic kids, we got fantastic parents and families, we love them to death. And some of them need a lot of support because there are some very real struggles that are going on every single day. I mean, you should know how many out of our hundred and ten kids or whatever, there's quite a lot of struggle going on personally in their life. And that can cause a problem on the education. Because when you're worried about how you're getting fed or who's picking you up that night or am I staying at this hotel or that hotel or no hotel, how are you going to sit down and do your homework? And so that's kind of where we're at. Yes. Math, you can see here, this slide actually that I have shown, so there's three more, there's three slides in here that aren't in possibly the hard copy version that you have at the moment. We added some math specific data. That is there and it will be uploaded, I've given it to Dr. Hire and that will be in there. But let me just kind of go through this really quick about what we're doing about math. Boosting math fluency, math facts, just basic math facts we're finding that they're struggling with. So one of those extra blocks of time that we've set aside, we have teachers just working on building flashcards, building games, building mathematics, tools and resources that they can use. But then they also take it home for the parents. And the kids can teach the parents how to use it as well. And then that teacher, we use Class Dojo as one of our big communication pieces. They send it to the parents on Class Dojo and they send it like, here's how you do this with it home. So they're making these tools and these resources to work on math facts and things like that in the class, working on it and then it's transferring home. So that's one of the things that we're really pushing. Small group instruction across the board, we have excellent, we, we take our data and every bi-weekly, we have bi-weekly meetings where we set with our teachers as a large team and we go over the big broad picture. Then every other week, we set individually with the individual teachers and we dive into the data. Look at what the data shows us, that's how we get our grouping set up and how we form our plan of attack for the coming weeks on what we are going to really focus on based on that data. We use FAST, we use iReady and Imagine Learning as three of our big data points, as well as in-class assessments, obviously. And then that's where we build our tier two and tier three groups and we target our intervention. And again, that resource teacher that we were talking about is a key part of this. Working with those kids in a very, very small group setting to go after those skills that need to be brought up. So yes, you're a third grader, but you're lacking in these first or second grade skills. We're targeting those skills, building your confidence and building that up. And then incorporating high engagement games and tools, again, like I was saying, building those things at, in the classroom, sending them home. And also like, we've got kids that go home and they, they do competitions on Prodigy at home and they come home and we have leaderboards. And parents will be like, yeah, they went home and instead of hopping on Fortnite, he hopped on Prodigy. It's like, yeah, that's pretty crazy. My own boy does that sometimes, not as much as I'd like, but yeah. But the thing is, is the engagement piece, because that's where we're getting, that's where we're losing a lot of our, a lot of our kids on the engagement. It's boring to them. And when they live in a world of gamification and instant of everything, sitting down and learning, you know, basic algebra is really, really boring to them. So anything that we can use, Reflex Math, Prodigy, those two, to make it more gamified really does help. But the key is on that is making sure that you're balancing the in-class work with the more fun delivery and presentation. We have several achievement objectives. So overall in ELA, we are aiming to go from forty-two percent at or above grade level to fifty percent by the end of this coming year. Set a clear target, achievable, maintains the momentum that we had and it's going to narrow our gaps. And then I break down here, we go into individual, I'm on kindergarten goal. These are the individual grade levels. So in kindergarten, for example, we're looking to get our on-grade levels from fifty to fifty-eight percent, raising our scale score from seven sixty-two to seven eighty. Good target measurable goal to hit, we really think we can there. And it's, it's ambitious, but it's still, it's still doable. And by building those kindergarten, that foundation in kindergarten, everything trickles down from kindergarten. We, we've got to make sure that our kindergarten is, is doing well. And so we're, we hired a brand-new kindergarten teacher this year. We made one of our changes because one of our better teachers last year was in kindergarten, she's now in third grade. And we hired a very qualified twenty-three-year veteran kindergarten teacher. It's all she's ever taught and that was one of her things, she's like, I only teach kindergarten, okay, let's go. First grade goal was the next one, the goal on that one is to go from a fifty to, fifty to a fifty-eight again. And that's an eight oh nine to an eight forty, so we've got some clear goals. That aligns us more in line with the state and district expectations, gets us closer to that. And again, numbers that we feel like that we can achieve. Second grade, I kind of had a shout-out on this one. Second grade for us last year was twelve points above state and district in the scale scores. And our proficiency rate was four percent higher. We had, and one of the, one of the differences is that teacher is highly engaging. Very engaging, very personal, very structured too. That teacher is now a fifth grade teacher. Because we needed where we were proven, where we had proven expertise and success, she stepped up and took fifth grade over. So now our third grade and our fifth grade have our two, two of our more experienced and successful teachers in charge of them. So we're aiming to go from a fifty-five to a sixty percent there and keep pushing because we really like that trajectory that second grade and those second graders are now our third graders. So we're really pushing for that. Third grade, we were six points below the state and three points below the district. So we are trying to go from a forty-eight percent on a grade level to fifty-five percent. We're looking to close that gap and it's a reasonable growth goal that we're setting and trying to get us much closer to the state. So after one or two years, we then should be on par. Third grade math goal, we are eight points below state, seven points below the district in scale score, nineteen below the state and eighteen in proficiency. That is, right there, that's what sunk our, our math proficiency and scores on the last one or on the last, last year's results. So we are aiming to go from forty-four percent to fifty-four, fifty-four percent on level on this one. And, and just working to close that gap, providing those tiered supports, targeting those lowest twenty-five percent. Because that's where we're going to see the most, where we're going to see the most bang for our buck. Those lowest twenty-five percent in our bubble kids that are right there on that edge. Fourth grade, we had some really good scores on the fourth grade when it came to, we were six points above state, seven points above, no, seven points above the district, six above the state. And we are eleven percentage points above the state in terms of proficiency. So this actually was one of our stronger performing grade levels. This teacher is still in fourth grade, so we've taken our three highest performing teachers and now they are our three, four, five teachers. And we are pushing on this one, we've got a ambitious goal, we're trying to go from sixty-seven to seventy percent on grade level. And the higher you go, the tougher it is to make that, but we've got some really good confidence. Because again, the teach, the kids really respond to this teacher, they're really engaged. And a lot of times it comes down to that parent, or that student-teacher relationship. And so we're really trying to take advantage of, of that. Math goals, math wasn't as good there. We are seven points below the state, four below the district. So we're trying to go on our scale score, we were trying to go from thirty-eight to fifty. That would be a two oh eight scale score to a two twelve by the end of this year. And again, securing that time. You've got the hour for math, we also have upwards of an hour additional that can be used for those math. We've got the, we've got the interventionist that goes in and works specifically with those kids. So they've got their main teacher teaching math, we've got the interventionist working with them, the resource teacher. And so we're trying to provide it to them in multiple ways and give them as much extra time as we possibly can to work on closing these gaps. And then we come to fifth grade, fifth grade was a disappointing grade for us last year. Again, that's the grade that for about three months, our teacher situation was not solid, it was not good. And then we just had some general inconsistencies and. And then we just had some general inconsistencies and buy-in from the students and engagement was a, a severe problem for us. And so, we were very below in math and ELA on that. Now, again, we are only a K through five school. These fifth graders have thus moved on to sixth grade, but for me, these are-
That, that leads me to my question. What is the feeder school for this? Is it King?
So, we're, we're right next to Prime, but-
Middle school, SUG.
Yeah.
SUG?
From fifth grade, they, they move on primarily to, what would you say, SUG and LEAD?
So, the names, when the parents come talk to us and we do matriculation and things like that, we hear SUG, we hear Oasis, we hear MSA, those kinds of schools.
Okay.
Okay.
So, still some charters?
Some, yes. Some of our parents stay, but I mean, SUG is a large, a large amount of where they would This was a very challenging class, that fifth grade class. I remember, it goes back to kind of parents, parent involvement. I remember having this conversation with a specific student four, five, six times throughout the year of just not doing, not engaging in anything and like flat-out asking why. I know I'm graduating, I know I'm not getting held back, I know if I bomb this test, it doesn't affect me, but when you go on to middle school, you're not going to be able to do these electives, that's fine, I'll do, I'll do the remediation course. And talking with mom, the answer was, oh, that's my daughter. And when a group of like five or, you know, five to ten kids, one is a huge number out of that group and it wasn't one that I had that conversation with. So, motivation, encouragement and building that level of confidence in the kid, that was a struggle. I'll remember that kid for a very, very long time because I, I could not motivate that kid. I could not find what, what needed to happen for that specific kid. So, I'll be interested in seeing how she's doing. However, this year, our fifth grade is looking much different. We have a highly engaging teacher with a rapport with the kids that is par to none. So, we're really looking for a gigantic change when it comes to these scores this year compared to these scores from last year. And then the fifth grade math goal, it goes right back to what I was just saying again. It was abysmal. It was a thirteen percent. That was, it was, I, I didn't know even what to say, it was just, it was a lot. So, we're thirteen to thirty, however, with the fifth grade group we have now, it's not even, it's going to be higher than that just because of the, the group difference and that fifth grade not carrying on with us. So, it's a different, it's a different beast there and a different set of kids. The monitoring moving forward, sorry, I'm a talker. Baseline data collection, so we use WEADA FAST, Imagine Learning, we do in-class assessments. We take that data and like I said, every other week, we set as a large group, go through the data on a big broad picture. And then every other week, we set as a small group, one to two teachers with me, the resource teacher, and we go into the, the nuts and bolts of the data and formulate the, the plan on what needs to happen. Then we, ongoing formative assessments, just every week, we're having formative and summative assessments, grades going into the book every single week. That way, it communicates to the parents what's going on. Homework being posted on Class Dojo and sent home with parents, trying to communicate what's going on in the classroom with them so that they can help with the home learning piece. And just constantly monitoring those assessments and checking in on them every, either in a large group this week or in a small focused group the next week after. Data review, those are those bi-weekly meetings that I was just mentioning. So, when we meet all as a group, that's our professional learning community, talking it out, trying to figure out where our, our strengths and our weaknesses are, and then formulating an attack plan to, to keep it going. And then the other weeks are the smaller group, individual teacher meetings that we hold. And then just monitoring the progress, using the data, that's the key. We've got several good key points of data between FAST, iReady and Imagine Learning and then the in-class assessments. We have to use that data to then formulate a plan on what these kids need. And then we adjust our interventions because we've got some really great, an MT, a wonderful MTSS RTI team who really sat down and dive into what is working for the kids, what's not working for the kids, what changes can we make? Let's get parents in here and get them part of it. We've had two or three of those conversations and meetings just in the last two weeks, getting parents involved in what their kid has. It's kind of interesting how often you have a meeting for an IEP or something and the parent's like, I don't know what's in it. Well, we've got to know, you need to know what your rights are, the student needs to know what they've got, that way they can take advantage of those things. So, just communicating and keeping that open with the parent is, is key. And then providing the professional development to our teachers. When we find an area that we're lacking or our teachers are saying, hey, I need some help with this, then going and getting PDs that target that. That's where we came up with some of this, this company because they were like, I'm needing help on how to reach my lowest twenty-five percent when I've got a group of twenty kids and how do I, how do I get those, those three or four kids that are struggling? What are some techniques and some ways I can do it? Well, this group is going to be part of helping us with that. So, they'll be providing professional development for all of us on that. Stakeholder feedback, talking with our parents, with our kids, talking to the kids and saying, how is it going? What's going on? What's working for you? Where is your struggle? That's, that's one of my points of pride in the school. My office door and administration, and our administration's very small, it's like two people. Our doors are open and when kids come in, like, very, very rarely is it like a disciplined thing. It is more of a, I'm having this kind of an issue, how do we fix it? And we communicate and we talk and we bring in whoever needs to be brought in. If it's Centerstone for something social or emotional, if it's parents for something behavior, if it's another teacher, like, okay, you're just not jiving with this teacher. Well, Mr. K, he could, he's got a little time, he could work you into his schedule. Would you like, you know, a day or two every week to go talk with him and work on something specific? Maybe he'll teach it to you in a different way. And so, that stakeholder feedback is really important, also being a Title I school, getting that info from our parents. What works for them? What do they see needing? Periodic evaluations, this is where I'm going into classrooms. Last year, I, last year, there wasn't enough hands-on going in observation. This year, I am going in every single week and my teachers know I'm not in there, it's not a got you, it's not a, I'm looking to catch something bad. I'm there to support, I'm there to, it's funny what my, just my presence setting in the classroom does to the overall demeanor of the class, you know? Because we all have a really good relationship with each other and they put on their best faces. And so, just supporting our teachers in that regard, going in there and you need a co-teacher for a little bit? Yeah, I can do that. Let's take two or three kids while you work with the group, I can work with two or three others. So, just supporting them in that way. And then in our, in our bi-weekly meetings that are one-on-one with the teacher, really talking with the teacher about, have you tried this? Or, let's, let's bring Ms., Mr. K in because he's had experience in this field, maybe he knows something that might be able to help you in this regard. Just trying to get them that information and data and evaluation on what could they do that could be a little bit of a change or what do they need? And sometimes they have needs that they've never brought and then they're like, oh, we need this. Okay, let's, let's see if I can get you a sub in here every month. That was one of the things. Can I get a, a sub once a month? Every day, we'll just put it on a schedule, that way I can then take and I can pull small groups and work with this small group while the sub takes the large group. Yeah, let's do that. And so, we lined up subs every month and we're continuing to do that this, this year as well. Just those kinds of things to, to support the teachers. iReady, this is just kind of a explanation of what iReady is, but it's an evidence-based intervention. It tailors itself to the kid. They take diagnostic, it sees where they are and then the program automatically tailors itself to the level that the kid's at with a goal of constantly bumping them up until they can get them on level. This is one of the things that parents can monitor and be a part of at home as well. Imagine Learning is another program. We, we try not to dump too many computer programs on our kids. One to two, that's pretty much it. Imagine Learning is another one, but it has a, a better track record with tier two and tier three interventions and also a lot of ELL supports built into it for our non, non-English speaking kids. And so, between iReady and Imagine Learning, these are two main programs which we get extra practice, remediation and important data points. And then the CLI, that is this group that I've talked about a couple of times, this is new to us. So, they are, they, they have a, on the What Works Clearing House, they have the highest evidence standards that show that in tier two and tier three interventions, that they can make a huge difference. They've gone into other schools and over the course of several years, they have been able to bring those schools up that were failing and bring them up into very high standards. And so, we're really looking forward to working with CLI and we're going to have our own personal person that comes in every single week and works with every single one of our teachers, myself, my staff, my kids, and then also the parents part. And it's not, thankfully, it's not just once a week, we actually are going to have them for most of the year, it will be once a week, but for about a month or two, they'll also be in there twice a week. So, we opted for that as well. We wanted as much support to our teachers as we possibly can. PBIS, these slides, these are talking about our positive behavior system and how we incorporate that with our parents. I'll kind of give you a bigger, broad overview because behaviors is not one of the things that we struggle with. It's because of, partly because of this. So, we use Class Dojo and we do a point system based on homework, attendance, attitude, all those kinds of things. Then it's a token economy because you can take those points and we have a school store and then they can go and purchase things that they need, want, like, they want this nice backpack that we've got in there, that's great. You want that hockey stick? All right, that's thirteen hundred points. So, we've got this gamut of different things ranging from ten points to ten thousand points. And they do that every other Friday. And so, that's like a big motivator and a drive, walking around campus with a phone out and when they transition, it's like silent transitions in line, okay? Our transitions aren't very long, they're very short, takes about twenty seconds, but man, they're walking perfectly. Break out the phone, they hear that ding, 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 positive points going in, they know that's cash money for the store. And so, they get really excited with that. We do little drawings and things at lunch, trying to psych them up and motivate them, getting that engagement again, getting them excited about being at school. Because one of the other major problems that we've had is attendance. And it, actually, that's going to be coming up here in just a little bit. But this PBIS system is all about getting kids engaged, excited and present at the school. And so, that's what we use it for. But overall, honestly, behaviors are, are, are big behaviors at our school, other schools would look at us and go, ooh, that's, that's nothing, that's little. So, we're happy with that. So, I'm kind of just going through because fourth, fifth, the PBIS, it's the, the same, it's the same for all of these. So, because of the implementation of Class Dojo, that, that community that we've tried to build and that culture of our school, thankfully, behavior is very low of a, a problem for us. It's more of a, honestly, it's more dealing, helping kids deal with their own personal issues that are going on at home or interpersonal issues between two kids at school who just haven't learned some of those social cues or know how to communicate or deal with conflict. That's, that's been a lot of it with these little kids for several years, conflict resolution over simple things. So, yeah, we're working with them in that regard and Centerstone is a really big part of that too. Centerstone, we have three representatives from Centerstone. We have one representative that comes in on Monday and he works on a one-on-one basis with about, I think we got nine kids this year, eight or nine kids, that one-on-one time, go with them and it's like therapy through Centerstone because they are going through, they're going through a lot. And then we have another group that comes in and does, does full group. And that's conflict resolution, that's, somebody makes you angry, how do you deal with it? Kind of a thing. And social cues and reading the room and that stuff. And then we have a couple of private therapists that come in for individual kids that they work privately with. But yeah, we've got Centerstone supporting us in that way, two to three times a week, every single week. So, we're very happy with that because, yeah, it, it really does make a difference when those kids have somebody to talk to. And you can tell a kid all the time, you can come talk to me, you can come talk to this teacher, but sometimes, sometimes you're just too close, too close to home and they need that other party or that, that other person to talk with. Attendance. Now, this one here, so, this is another big, big part of our school grades for the last two years. This one keeps me up at night and makes me sick. So, chronic absence is ten percent, right? Ten percent of the school year. Okay. So, twenty-seven kids of our a hundred and let's say nine students last year, twenty-seven of them were chronically absent. And you know what? A large percentage of those kids were also our bottom twenty-five percent kids. They're not at school, they're not here. And I kid you not, on our log, every day, parents, if they come in late, they have to sign in the reason, we have to report that. I had a parent last year, twenty-three times, had a flat tire. But that's the struggle that we're fighting against and being a very, very small school, and we're not the smallest school, there's one or two others that are smaller, but being a very small school, twenty-seven, that is a huge percentage of my population. Yesterday, my third, no, my fourth grade, out of the, we had five weeks in school now, we've only had four days where we've had every kid. And we are, we contact the parents, we talk, they block us on their, they don't pick up on the cell phone sometime. Wellness checks, like making sure, we've had to even be like, just drive by, just let us know that you're still okay. We had kids last year that went, went on vacation for over a month overseas and, and right before testing. During testing, we had a parent, she knew, they knew about the testing windows for like three months because they're, we know them pretty well, we publish them and get them out. And then on the day of ELA testing, halfway through the test, she comes and I need to take my son for the doctor's appointment and he worked his butt off for it. And you should have seen his face as he left knowing that score just got tossed out the window and he worked his butt off for it. So, engagement of the kids wanting to be at the school, buy-in from the parents are two of our biggest challenges that we're fighting against. I tell you what, my teachers, they are good. They are highly educated, they have good backgrounds, they, they've been teachers for a long time. The youngest teacher I've got is two or three years in, my, my most rookie teacher. And they care is the other, that's the biggest thing. They are willing to put in the work for this. But sometimes they feel like, they tell me it's like an uphill battle, fighting against kids that don't show up and then come to take a test and tell me, I don't care if I pass, I'm just going to check or board it. But again, that's our responsibility on how we're going to motivate them. That's not an excuse, but it is part of the reality. And so, that's what we're working on. So, again, we're really trying to hit, focus on our attendance this year too and making sure every kid is here. Kind of wrapping up, because I know I'm a, I'm a talker and I apologize. Data collection and analysis, we are always collecting our data every single week with in-class instruction, online, iReady data, all of those things. We are meeting weekly as a group and then every other week, or bi-weekly as a group and then on the off weeks, we're meeting with the individual teachers, going over that data, looking at it, what does it mean? How do we use the data? We're reviewing that data, we're having quarterly meetings every quarter for the big picture. So, we're setting short-term goals, we're setting medium-term goals as in quarters. So we're setting short-term goals, we're setting medium-term goals as in quarters, and then we're setting our long-term goals for the end of the year. And we're having these talks every, tomorrow, tomorrow's Wednesday, tomorrow I have a meeting, and we're going to be going back over this. We've got our first month under our belt, where are we at, what are we doing, how are we going forward? And then how is what we're doing having an impact? Is it having a positive impact, a negative impact? What do we need to change, fix, or keep on going with? A few, yeah, I'm very close to being done now. My throat's getting sore, sorry. Just a couple of things that I don't know if I'd mentioned, and I may already have. We have that dedicated resource teacher that you asked about, I made a note on here, doing that data-driven instruction. The kids are excited when they do that, too. It's individual time that that kid gets, outside of a group of 20 kids, they get that one-on-one time with the teacher. They are more engaged, they're more into it, and they, and they, that pressure of being asked that question in a group of 20 kids, and being one of the lower kids, and not knowing if you know the answer, that pressure gets taken off them in that situation. And so that really helps. The Children's Literacy Initiative, we're, we have to, we're using a good amount of funds to help with this and to get them to come with us and help us, train us, work with our kids, work with our parents. So we're very excited about that. And I'm actually, should be hearing back from them this week on getting the schedule finalized. We've gotten all the documents signed and everything. So I'm hoping within next week or the week after, they're going to be, they're going to be on the ground with us. So I'm really looking forward to that. Centerstone has been a wonderful partner for us for the last several years. Prior to COVID, we partnered with them a lot, and then when we couldn't have everybody in the campus, that relationship kind of fell away, and we've really established that relationship again because our kids come, I mean, just like every kid in this county. There's things that they're struggling with. We've maximized our ELA math and science and instructional time. So ELA, not just the bare minimum, they could get upwards of three hours of additional ELA. Not just the bare minimum with math, they could get upwards of an hour and a half to possibly two hours of math, depending on how we, where the need is. Science, not the bare minimum of 30 minutes, we've made it an hour block. Because those are, we've got to be bringing these kids up. We've got to be getting their, letting them realize their potential and motivating them to get to that. Bi-weekly team meetings, PLCs continuing and going on. Our intervention meetings, every other week after that, continuing to go on. Communication with the staff and communication with our parents, keeping them in the loop, knowing what's going on. Having parents into, inviting them in, I've had parents sitting with their kids before, already this year. Can I come and just provide him just a little bit of motivation that he might need? And it's funny to see that, that change in the kid when they see grandma sitting out on a bench, just kind of watching. So that's where we're at. We, this is going to work because it's, I've got the teachers. I've got the teachers, I've got the resources, I've got the curriculum. We've got the training, we've got the data, and we've really narrowed down our areas of concern with our lowest 25%, our bubble kids, and our engagement. And we are laser-focused on tackling those, those issues. So instead of just reacting to it, we're taking that data, making a plan, and going after it. So when I come back here, I imagine I have to come back here sometime next year.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, we want an update.
Yeah, yeah.
We want to hear about the success.
Because none of my teachers are there for the paycheck alone. Like, they got into education because they have an intrinsic drive and love. And I, I'm tired of hearing my teachers call me and cry on the phone and say, you know, I don't know what else to do. And so we're really trying to, to make it for them, for the teachers and the parents and the kids. I hope that answered everything you need. I have, this is the first time I've ever done one of these, so I got no clue. I may have bored you to death or talked way too much, I apologize.
No, Mr. Jones, I commend you, this is not easy to do, especially for a first time. You covered a lot, but you did it well. Two things real quick. I have, from previous experience, a volunteer connection. She worked with Children's Literacy Initiative in Philadelphia.
Okay.
With a $1.5 million grant, had some incredible academic learning gains as part of that grant. She now lives in Sarasota, and is very involved with Sarasota and with, I haven't seen her a bit, she's more in Sarasota now. But I've got your contact info in the CLI agreement. It sounds like you got everybody ready to go, but I just want to, she, she's retired, but this is like her life's work.
Yeah.
And she would love an opportunity to help out.
I'm open to.
I'll just put, I'll just connect the two of you, and you can take it from there.
Absolutely, I'm open to anything, and that, yeah.
And I'm really happy to see that our former superintendent is working with you from CLI. Diana Green's signature is on the CLI agreement.
Oh, I did not realize that.
Yeah, so you're in good hands.
It's one of my questions.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, any other questions, did I miss anything?
I don't think so. No questions for? Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's not easy, but it's good stuff. Look forward to, look forward to hearing about the results.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, you're extremely passionate about it, and we're excited to see the results.
It was really, it was really something when we were one point, when we slipped one point to that D. And then this year, when it was one to two more point slip, it was just, it's honestly, it's a fire. I talked with Dr. Hyer, and there was a day that I was not in a, I was not in a good mood that day. And the next day, I talked to her, and I said, I've had to, I've had to think, I've had to decompress, I've had to change my mindset, and now it's fuel for the fire.
Sure.
So, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Very much.
Have a good rest of your day.
Oh yeah, I'm heading back, and we'll tackle it again today.
Do you need time to flip any presentations, or no, you're good? Okay. Does anyone need to take a break?
I'm good.
Okay, for now?
Should we pull that presentation?
All right, so next topic is the annual investment report, fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
Okay, perfect. Would you like to contribute? Yes, that's what I can do, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's correct, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll give it to you, Dr. Breslin, and you can introduce.
Absolutely, I'll let Mrs. Sellers introduce our next guest that will be giving us a briefing on our annual investment report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
Good morning, everyone. So with us today is.
Even if you just slide it next to you while you're talking.
Well, they hate it when we move those. So with us today is, from Deep Blue, we have Dominic Cristofaro.
Cristofaro.
Okay, and John Scott, his is a lot easier.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Pleasure to be here today presenting the annual report. Before we get started, I just want to briefly introduce ourselves because this is the first time presenting for the two of us. So as you mentioned, my name's Dominic Cristofaro, I'm the Director of Client Advisory Services for Deep Blue. And John Scott is Client Associate also in advisory. We serve as the district's investment advisory firm. And a little bit about our background, because it's very, it's very unique. Both of us come from the school district side. Previous to Deep Blue, I was Finance Director and Treasurer of Pasco County Schools. So I've served on your side of the table, should I say. And John comes from being a middle school teacher, which is even harder. How many years?
14 years in middle school math.
14 years.
God bless you.
Yeah, so I'm very fortunate to have him because he's very patient, very, very patient in the things we need to do. Before you, I have our annual report. This is the report, investment report for the fiscal year 2024-25. So I'm going to turn to page, let me see, it's right here. We're going to turn to page, let's see, two. I won't go into great detail because I know we're limited on time, on the economy. I just want to mention, today and tomorrow, the Fed is meeting. Our expectation, and the market expectation, is that the Fed is going to cut 25 base points. As you probably have heard, inflation is still lingering. We've seen a little bit of an uptick in inflation over the last few months. However, we're starting to see sort of a deterioration of the labor market. And so the Fed, I think, is poised to make sure that they get ahead of that. And so we expect that the Fed is going to cut 25 base points tomorrow. Additionally, the expectation is that we're likely going to see probably another cut before year end. Okay? So if there's no questions, I want to move to the meat of the presentation and the report, but I just want to just mention that because I know that everyone's focused, what's going on with the Fed and the markets. The economy has been holding up, and employment rate has been steady. But we've seen the job market sort of kind of slow down, and I think the Fed is going to move, we're pretty certain, 100% certain, the Fed's going to move 25 base points tomorrow, okay? Are there any questions? Okay, move to page five, your investment summary. Before I go into the numbers, I just want to say, your investments are consistent with the principles of the state of Florida statutes of safety, liquidity, and return being secondary. So this is a list of all your investments currently. Your operating funds total about 300 and just almost 11 million. And your bond proceeds accounts total about 200 and just over 16 million. Altogether, you have about 527.5 million in total investments, okay? This doesn't include any balances you have at your bank, this is strictly your investment accounts, okay? You can see at the bottom of the page, the ratings of these investments, they're all very highly rated AAA investments, okay? So very safe investments. Any questions on this page before I move forward? Page two provides some information as to portfolio statistics and earnings. You can see that overall, your portfolio for, on your operating side, earned about 15.2 million in interest income, and had about a gain of just under $1,900. And then your bond proceeds had a total of about 6.5 million in earnings. So when you put those two together, you can see you're about 21.7 million in income earnings, plus about 1,900 in, in market value, positive market value. So total of 21.7 million in earned income. So that very great number for, for the year. You know, kind of equates to, if you do, you know, sort of a calculation napkin, you're looking at just over 4%, or so, 4.2% of interest earned over the, over the year, okay? Any questions on this page? Okay, the next couple of pages just give you some information as far as how everything's allocated to the different investments. I'll leave that for your information. Certainly, if you have any questions before the end, please, please move forward. And I mean, move forward with any questions and ask. And then I'll just go forward to page 10, this is very important, this is your compliance summary. This provides, how is your portfolio complying with your investment policy? And remember, your investment policy is set also based on the state statutes, right? So these, your policy is in compliance with state statutes, and your investments are complying with your investment policy. So if you can see the column, the third column from the left, all that is yes. You, so you're within your investment policy, really nothing that's touching on any of your maximums allowed, okay? So, so that's, that's good. The second page breaks it down a little bit more, it looks at your more individual investments, and making sure that no individual investment is too much of your portfolio. You can see that the column in compliance says yes, so from individual standpoint, you're well within your compliance numbers, your pools and your investments are compliant with your policy, okay?
Mr. Jones, I have a question, please. Back on page 10, sir.
Yes.
At the very end, as you were making your comments, you said something to the effect of, you're in compliance, you're nowhere near your limit, or something like that, what did you mean by that?
So when you look at your current book value and your current allocation, has a percentage of how much you have in that asset or that investment? And then the next column gives you what the policies permits in that investment. So right now, for example, you're 38%. In that particular, in pools, you're, in Florida Prime, you'd like to go up to 100%. But there's other ones there that may be 50 or 35%. If you have, if you ever have any investment in those, it's just that, you don't want them to exceed those limits, those maximum limits that are set forth in the policy, okay?
Okay, great, thanks.
And then the last couple of pages are really your, your investment policy for your bond issuances. Those are usually a little bit different, they allow mostly in your pool. So really, with all your bond investments, you're within your investment policy also. Okay? That summarizes sort of the highlights of the report. Overall, your district is doing great. We work very closely with Rachel and Kathy and the finance staff. They do a great job, we have a great communication and working relationship. And so anytime they need anything, we're there. And certainly, if you all have any questions, you can always let Rachel know, we'll be glad to answer them.
Chad, okay. Yeah, thank you both for being here, Phil. I guess my biggest question is, how do, where do we stand compared to similar-sized districts, similar-sized budget districts?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't like to compare districts because everybody has a different, not investment. Most policies are very similar, but the cash flows of one district versus another may be different, right?
Fair enough.
Construction projects they have.
Sure.
So I don't like to compare, but I could just say that in comparison to what the market rates have been, you're very, very competitive with those rates, okay? All your investments have had upwards of, you know, in this environment, about 440 to 450 in interest earning percent. So you're very competitive with, with sort of what the market rates have been. Now, that being said, we know that the Fed is going to cut rates, so it will affect your earnings there. You know, those rates are going to come down a little bit.
Right, right.
We still think that even for next year, you know, for the end of the year, even if they come down 50 base points, you're still going to be earning somewhere around 390 to 4%. So it's still a good amount, considering that back in 2022, you were earning, you know, 10 basis points in your investments because of the rate environment. So, so overall, your investments are competitive with market rates. You, more importantly, you're invested in things that are safe and liquid, because that's the most important, you want to make sure that those investments are there when you need them. And, and they are, they're doing just that, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
I had a question real quick. On, on page six of your book, there's a bullet down at the bottom that says, does not include balances of JP Morgan. Yet on page seven, it shows cash JP Morgan 2.66%. Is that?
Yes, so yes, so this is just saying that you, this just totals your investments only. It's saying, we don't, when we talk about investments, we don't talk about cash, because cash is not considered investment. Right, so JP Morgan is your bank, your bank account, your checking account and those accounts.
Okay.
So on this page, because it really focuses on investments, does it include the bank balances?
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, I don't think there's any questions, appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. All right, so next is our presentation on our COPS, our certificate participation for 2026. Ms. Sellers, you want to go ahead and introduce?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and try to, I'm allowed to turn this anyways. Okay, we have here, this morning, we've got, okay, this is part of the finance team. So we have with us today Laura Howell, she is with PFM. They are our financial advisors. Along with her is Ritesh Patel with NGN, our bond counsel. And here today also is Rick Patterson, he's with Raymond James. One of our underwriters for the COPS 2026 was for COPS 2025. And Raymond James was also the senior underwriter for COPS 2023. So this is our.
The team.
The finance team for the certificates of participation.
Just a portion of us.
I don't know if the presentation will pop up. The presentation.
No, that's, it's not it. Where did Laura go? We need to take a break so that they can get that set up.
Yeah, we can take five minutes. That's fine.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go to recess. All right, welcome back.
Hi. As Rachel had said, my name is Laura Howell. I am with PFM Financial Advisors as your financial advisor for the district. And we're going to walk through a couple of different proposed financings that we have for you today that will come before the board for consideration at a later point in time. To start off, and this is a little bit dated, these rates were as of August, end of August 22nd at the market close. The tax exempt rates have increased on the back end of the curve, and they're near the 10-year historical average. So the graphic on the right with the tan bars, it's going across. The darker blue line is where rates were as of August 22nd. And a year ago in 2024 is a light blue line. However, since the market is anticipating that the Fed is going to decrease interest rates on the back end of the curve over since the date up until yesterday, those rates have dropped about 40 basis points. So there's still a lot of volatility going on in the market. As of now, rates are shifting. There is the expectation, as Dominic had said, that the Fed is going to reduce rates tomorrow, possibly continue through the end of this year. As we'll discuss, at least for the long-term debt, this is not something that we're planning to price immediately. We're looking at, you know, potentially later in this year, the spring of next year for this. But this is something that we're monitoring and keeping a pulse on as we're moving through the financing process with the financing team to figure out the final needs on this. But just want to kind of give you a snapshot in this. And we do anticipate that rates will continue to kind of fluctuate up and down until we get to pricing as well. So the first financing, we're going to be talking to
I have a question. I'm sorry to interrupt you, man.
Sure.
So if we, let's say we borrowed the money today, what would approximately, what would the interest rate be?
Do you want me to wait until we get to the financing piece to talk through all that? Because I do want to just point out when these numbers were run. Obviously, it's outdated, so I do have the updated numbers for you today. So I'll talk through.
But let's say we were just, but today, if we're like, today, we were going to borrow the money.
For a 20-year level debt service?
Yeah.
Yeah, so hang on just a second. As of yesterday's close, the true interest cost would be 4.03%, so 4%.
4.03%? Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, and you'll see the numbers later in here when we're talking about the long-term debt do show different. But this is the point, is rates are going to continue to fluctuate, and we'll talk through all of that.
So on your chart, though, it shows it up around 4.5%. But is that what you meant by the 40%, 4.4% drop in basis points or whatever?
So the BVAL AAA municipal curve is sort of the baseline. So if you're a perfectly rated municipality, you would anticipate to price on a general obligation bond almost directly on top of that. And then depending on the credit security that you're going out with, there's spreads that add on top of it. And so we take into consideration looking at where the curve is and the spreads on top based on the district's credit rating. And so much like your own personal credit, when you're going, you know, to get a mortgage, they're looking at that. Investors are looking at the credit rating of the district as well and the spread that's going on top. And so the certificates of participation would price a higher spread in than, say, a GO, which we would anticipate to price kind of very close to this curve, a AAA GO.
Okay, thanks.
So the first issuance that we're going to be talking about, which will be coming to the board later this evening for consideration as a tax anticipation note, these are short-term financings that allow the district to pay the operating expenses, not the capital expenses. So the salaries of the teachers. And this is because of when property taxes are received with the bulk coming in in November. And because of the property base in Manatee Schools, your state funds aren't as consistent, and so maybe with a smaller property tax base. And we do have shown here on this graphic the actual projected FY '26 cash flow funds for the district. And so you'll see the blue bars are growing through, and this is cumulative. And then the shortfall that is occurring at the start of this year and really dips down in November until those receipts start to come in. And so this is, again, as I had said, something that the district has done for many, many years to bridge that shortfall before the receipts come in. The resolution that's coming to the board this evening is for a not-to-exceed amount of 55 million of par. The anticipation is that we'll actually be issuing 45 million with approval from the board with the final maturity occurring in February 26th of 2026. And as of August 26th, estimated rate was 3.44%. This is not locked in. We do anticipate that we wouldn't close this until October 9th, I believe. And part of the reason we're bringing it to the board early is that we can enter into a rate lock agreement with the bank between after board approval and before we close to lock in an interest rate. Obviously, we don't know what the market's going to do, but if it's an ideal time and we feel it's a good interest rate, we can go ahead and lock that before we close in October. And this is just showing you sort of the summary of the TANs over the past 10 years that the district has issued, the paramount in each of those years, who was the winning bidder, and then the interest rates. And those interest rates you're seeing are fluctuating significantly over the years, just with the market. But like I said, that 3.44% is, you know, where the rates were at the end of August that the bank was offering. So, okay, before we move on, any questions about the tax anticipation note?
Chad, if I may? I guess I just have one. What is the practical effect if the Fed does lower today, tomorrow? I should know this, but the Fed meets quarterly? Or they kind of schedule when they need to?
Like it's every other month?
Yeah. Oh, okay.
There's certain months, I mean, there's certain months that they meet, and there's a couple of months that they don't.
Gotcha, but generally, every couple of months?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is really our meeting to kind of see savings if they do drop, if the Fed does drop a quarter point or whatever.
So what I was saying about rates from when, at the end of August, when those initial rates were pulled together until today and how it's dropped up to 40 basis points already. And so the market typically, that's part of the volatility we've been seeing, is that they already bake in the expectations of what the Fed is going to do. And so ever since these talks have started to come out, they've started to bake in. And so if the Fed lowers rates tomorrow, you'll kind of see it level out. If they don't, then there's that volatility going in again through it. And so the short-term rates that were bid here at the end of August, we can ask the bank for an updated rate to kind of get a sense of what they're seeing. And short-term is a little bit different than how the tax exempt community market is working. The bank that, the provider that was being selected for this with the winning bidder was Wells Fargo, and they do it on an internal cost of funds. So we do look at the overall short-term rates as when they're offering a rate lock to make sure the consistency of the rate they bid on the date of the proposal to when we lock is consistent with market movement on short-term rates. But yes, so for the long-term market as well, it's like the investors, they already start to kind of bake in what, and that's part of the reason we've seen so much volatility over the, they're projecting their expectations.
So for the tan, this is about what we should expect. We're not going to see a lot of change.
Right, we shouldn't, I mean, no.
Hopefully, we don't.
Right, yes. Don't ever know. Any other questions on the tax anticipation note? Okay. So next, we're going to be moving into the new money needs, which I know this board has had a lot of discussion about what's going to be going into these projects. And so I think that we have come to the agreement that this is the high school AAA for 182.5 million that's coming on board. Moody Elementary School for 30 million for the campus upgrades. Lake Manatee K-8 12 School Edition for the 17.5 million. And so we just want to walk through a couple of different structures with you on this and chat with you about that. Again, as this is moving along, these are going to be, we'll be working with Rachel and Kathy and their team to make sure that this is in the best interest based on the parameters that we do bring to you in October for approval. So based on the 230 million, this graphic is showing what is the level debt service. And so that is showing equal principal and interest in the new money component over all of those years. The tan portion on the bottom, so the solid tan is your current debt service. The tan striped line, and so I hope this isn't too confusing, the striped tan lines are your current debt service that is currently being paid by impact fees. So when it was eligible, it was impact fee eligible. The blue on top is the proposed 230 million. Out of the 1.5 mils is a solid again. And then the shaded boxes are those projects that would be paid by potentially eligible impact fees moving forward. And the yellow line is 50% of that 1.5 mils. Same thing with this next slide, is if we do a wrapped structure. And so that's where we're looking at the aggregate of making it level across through the 2045 final maturity of all of your debt, not just this current issuance. And so in this case, the new money of the 2026 would be more loaded on the back end between 2039 and 45. Same concept here where the shade is the impact fee eligible projects. The solid is what can only be paid for by those 1.5 mil dollars. And just to walk through sort of the difference of this, obviously, you're issuing the debt. The impact fees are not such a secure revenue source that we pledge those only. That's why we use the 1.5 mils with impact fees that can come in because those can fluctuate from year to year. So if the impact fees continue to come in at the rate that they're coming in and that debt service is continuing to be paid fully with it, just want you to see the picture then of what your debt service would look like with the 1.5 mils only eligible compared to then where you are at the 50% of the 1.5 mils. So.
I have a question there real quick, please. So on, let's see, page six.
Yes.
So 1 mil in the county brings in approximately $80 million. Is that right, Ms. Sellers? Is that about right? Because that's how much, if we look at our 1 mil, like our operating tax. Anybody know that off the top of their head?
This came up last time we talked about it. It was around 75 or 80.
Yeah, it's around.
Because our taxable value was like 75 billion.
Yeah, so.
80 billion.
Yeah, I think I've seen 80. So let's just use that as a round number. So then 1.5 mils is 120 million? Am I doing my math right? So then what you're showing us on this chart would be, so to reach the 50%, so 50% of the 120 million would be 60 million. So that's what you're saying. We're trying not to exceed that as our annual debt payment, more than 60 million dollars. Is that right? So that it's not more than 50% of our revenue that we bring in with the 1.5 mil capital tax. Is that right?
Yeah, so your FY 2026 taxable assessed value was the 80.4 billion with then at the 1.5 mils at an assumed 96% collection rates. Is that 115.8 million? And so we look at this assuming only 50% of the debt service. Then is it, that's 57.9 million is at that. And so the reason that we do this, legally, you're allowed to issue up to 1.125 mils of debt, which is 86.8 million for your fiscal '26 value. We like to be conservative. This is a growing school district. We don't know what's going to happen with property tax values. We know that there's, you know, sharing with charters that is going on. That's a continuous, constant change in what's happening in the legislation. And so when we look at this and we try and structure the debt, we like to aim for under the 50% of that value. But legally, you can go up to 1.125 or 75% of the 1.5 mils.
And so is this chart on page six showing that our, it's trying to show our annual debt payment during all these years? Is that what it's, is that what it's, the bar, the bar graph, is that what it's attempting to show?
Yes. So the TAN is your current debt service. That's showing in the solid is what is only eligible by the 1.5 mils. The shaded pieces are those that are currently being paid by impact fees, but also the 1.5 mils can utilize it. The blue is the proposed 230 million of new money needs.
Right. So, but what it's trying to show is if you added up all those things in a bar.
Right.
That's how much our total debt service would be on an annual basis.
Correct.
So in 2026, it's about 35 or 36 million. Then when we do the COPS, it goes up to, it looks like what, 51 or 52 million and it stays steady all the way till 2038. And assuming we don't borrow any more money, it goes back down to just under 30 million. Is that what that's trying to show?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's why we show a couple of different scenarios, like on slide seven, that's showing you if we level this over the length of the debt that's currently outstanding, it keeps it around 45 million that you're looking at this. And so that's, you know, additional capacity for future growth. But I do want to keep in mind all that shaded portion can be paid for with impact fees and currently is being paid for with impact fees on the outstanding debt service.
Okay. Ms. Sellers, I don't know if you remember when, because I paid attention to this because it's kind of my thing that I'm working on right now. It seemed like the proposed debt service payments were going to be in the range of 62 to 63 million dollars annually when we went over one of our capital expenditure plans. And they seem to be about 10 million dollars lower on an annual basis. Am I, do you remember any, any of what I'm talking about or?
I can't remember if the exact total was. Right now, my recall's not pulling that out.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we, these have been calculated correctly. And if they have been, then that's fine. That's good. I just remember the numbers showing in our cap, one of our capital briefings that our annual debt payment, we're going to be in the range of 62 to 63 million dollars with our new COPS that we were going to go forward with.
I think that, because we had already put that in, and I think our capital accountant had put it in that, had it in that range when we had that.
So what accounts for the difference then that now we're only looking at maybe 51 or 52 million? So why has our annual, our projected annual debt payments come down by 10 million dollars annually, less than what you were projecting when you gave us that briefing?
Yeah. I think when you were seeing that whole group, I think the sales tax was in on that. I don't think that's in this particular picture here.
Okay.
So that would have added.
Correct. I agree with you. I think the sales tax, I'm trying to go back and look at it. I think it was all of our debt service, which is sales tax, but this is not.
Okay. So this is just showing us how much of impact fees we're using. This is, this chart is just showing.
So the certificates of participation or COPS are secured by your 1.5 mils, which is your capital outlay, based on the taxable assessed value.
Right.
However, you can utilize impact fees to help offset that debt service.
Right.
And so what this is showing you is what you'll actually be saying our 1.5 mils can support fully. Say, impact fees zero out next year, you still have, you're still under, well, under that 50% is what we're showing you. Currently though, the district is using in the TAN piece, the impact fee eligible projects are currently fully being paid for by impact fees. But again, since that's a revenue source that can fluctuate every year, it's not a guarantee. And so the 1.5 mils can pay for it if for some reason there's not the impact fees there.
So maybe if I'm looking at the wording on the chart, inclusive of impact fee eligible.
Eligible.
Are these, so is this all the debt that the, that the district pays on its, on whatever money it borrowed? Or is it just payments based on 1.5 mils and impact fees?
So it's just your COPS. So it's strictly your certificates of participation, not your sales tax bonds. And what I would say is, in this graph, if you look at the solid TAN, the filled-in TAN, that is what is being paid from one and a half mils. So you're using about currently, and you know, projecting out as Laura has in this graph, you're looking at a little over, a little over 20 million dollars, 22 million, using one and a half mil dollars for those. And then you're using impact fees for a majority of the rest, except for the solid blue bars, which is one and a half mils again.
Okay. So we are probably up around 62 or 63 million in annual debt payments.
Yeah, so you're.
This chart doesn't show all of our debt.
Sales tax is about 12 million, 12.6 million a year.
Okay.
And that's a separate security lien. So that's why it's not included in this conversation. And since that's totally, we're not using sales tax dollars for the proposed new money issuance. And so that's why separate security paying those revenue sources.
And does the, do those limits of, they suggest a limit of .5 and the legal limit of .75, do they, it applies irrespective of the sales tax bond?
Right. It just applies to your one and a half mil revenue. You can only use legally up to, legally, .75 or 75%, 1.125 mils of the one and a half mils for your lease purchase payments. But you're not going to be close to that based on this graph here.
Right. Because, but that's, doesn't include sales.
Does not include sales tax.
Sales tax payment.
Strictly, your legal limit for one and a half mils is the 1.125 mils. But as Laura mentioned, they try to keep you under 50% of that, so .75.
And I'm just, why do we try and stay under 50%?
Yeah. As I had said, you know, we saw the great recession happen where property values dipped significantly. The legislature went from allowing two mils to eventually down to the 1.5 mils we're at now. We don't know what the continued growth is going to be in the district. We like to be conservative when we're looking at this. We don't want to be in a situation where you're not going to have money to pay for your debt service. And we also know that you guys are a growing school district and we want to make sure that if there's additional needs down the road that need to be borrowed for, you have capacity so that we can still do it in a conservative way that's most effective.
So this is just kind of a suggest, when I say suggestion, I mean, it's a good suggestion maybe, but you as our kind of consultants that do this for us, you're suggesting as a quasi-policy that we stay under the 50% limit, just?
Correct. I mean, we, we, there are situations where we have clients that go over that 50% and it's not a problem. And talking with the rating agencies as well, this is the plan that's kind of going forward. This is why, I mean, there's nothing that's set in this. But just because of what's happened historically, we want to make sure that there's enough revenues and that you're in a secure position. And so that's what we aim for that 50%. If you go above it, you're still legally allowed to do so. But when we're looking at this, you know, in talking with Rachel, I said, what's coming in the next five years as well. And so that stuff that I'm looking at when layering this in, and so I saw, you know, potential for additional needs down the road. And I said, can you afford to do 20-year debt service currently? Do we need to go out to 25-year debt service with the potential, we know that that can change, but for what's coming down the road as well. And so those are the things we're looking at. You can go over that 50%. We like to see if we can aim to keep within it. I understand from hearing the conversations as the board has discussed, you know, keeping this in line with the current expiration of 2025, not extending past that date seems to have been a conversation point that was very important. And so we're trying to structure this that we can keep it at that and not go out to 25 years. And so these are things that, this is not just what we look at. We're looking at the whole picture as well. I'm layering in, you know, what if they're needing 800 million in the next five years? What if it's only 20 million? This is all the analysis we're kind of doing that drives down to where you are just today for your new money needs. But that 50% line is something that we're constantly looking at. Do you potentially go over that in the future? Possibly. Could property values drop? Yes. But then that's still giving you plenty of room to legally be in and pay. And then there's also other capital dollars that we know don't just pay for your debt service. They're paying for a lot of other needs within the district. And so that's something that we also keep in mind as well.
Okay. So at what point does our, as we start borrowing more and more money and get closer to those limits of 50% and 75%, does that have any effect on interest rates? You know, the more you borrow and so you're getting closer to your limits. And then maybe people say, well, gee, you're, you know, you're borrowing a lot of money. So maybe we want to ask for a little more interest from you or something like that because you're just getting closer to your limit.
So your credit rating would potentially be what would maybe drive the interest rates are fully based on what's happening in the market. It's your credit spread that is linked to then your credit rating and the security of the COPS. We look at this when we're talking with the rating agencies as well. You know, they prefer to see it that you stay under 50%. Are there situations where districts have been growing, as Dominic knows, I worked with him when he was at Pasco Schools in a district that was growing very rapidly, and they would be over that 50%. And it's having those conversations, it's explaining why without it impacting the credit rating of the district as well. And so planning for that in the future. So it's nothing that, your debt leverage is a portion that goes into your credit rating, which then will impact potentially the spreads of when you go to price the bonds. But that's, that's not, if there's a need to go above the 50%, we're not going to not do that just for the fear of, you know, what the credit rating agencies. But when we have those conversations to explain, they often understand if there's a growth need and it's being managed very proactively by the district, which this board is doing and all the planning that they're doing, there's a lot of components that go into the credit rating. And so just bumping above the 50% isn't going to automatically say then ultimately your interest rates are going to be, being have to a higher interest rate when you go to borrow.
Okay. That was educational. Thank you.
And so just, there was a lot in those different charts between the aggregate level, the level, the impact fee eligible, without the impact fee eligible. And so this, it's sort of summarizing what both of that is. Both of those charts are sort of saying. So the level debt service, again, that's being shown in the middle column, is that where it's equal principal and interest over the 20 years of this debt issuance. And then the aggregate level, which is the far right summary, is showing then where the total overall debt service outstanding for the district is level. Both of these are assuming the 230 million of project fund, the same delivery date in March, the same maturity, final maturity in 2045. And you'll see the true interest cost is the difference. The 4.43% for the level principal and interest, whereas if we're doing aggregate, which means more of the principal's maturing in later years, it's up to that 4.78%. And what I want to drive down in this, you know, the rates today, as I had said, the 20-year level is around 4%. The aggregate level is down to the 4.43%. So those rates are going to continue to move. What we're looking at as well is your MADS. So aggregate MADS is taking into account all of your debt service outstanding plus estimated 230 million new money issuance. And so there's a difference when it peaks with the level at 51 million, which would require up to .66 mils. Or the aggregate level, which is 45.8, which would require up to .6 mils. But I do want to know as well, if you're taking out the eligible debt service, what that does to the aggregate MADS and the estimated millage that's being utilized. And so the aggregate MADS less the impact fee debt service on assuming a new level issuance coming in would be 34 million or .44 mils required used. Or the 20-year where its aggregate overall is the 25.7 million or .34 mils. So either way, this is showing that, you know, the district is still really in a very healthy position, even if impact fees fall away. We're not asking for, you know, the recommendation as of now where it's aggregate level or level debt service. I would love to hear the preference though. And so then when we get to market timing, we can structure this best for the district on that component.
I have a question there, please. So I'm back on the slide number nine, please. Excuse me. First of all, what does MADS stand for? M-A-D-S?
Oh, sorry. Maximum Annual Debt Service.
That's what I thought. Okay. So did I hear you say, I thought I heard you say it again, and maybe I'm not understanding this correctly. Is that, that number is all of our debt service? All of it?
Your certificates of participation, that's eligible to be paid by the 1.5 mils, not your sales tax.
Not all of our debt service. Okay. I understand. And then the, the term average life in years, what does that mean? Do we expect to pay, like in column one there, do we expect to pay it off in 11.73 years? Or what does that mean?
So the average life is the term, and when we look at this as well, so this is as you're consolidating this, and Ritesh might pop in more from the lawyer of the tax purpose side. But there's a useful life of the projects that you have to make sure that you're within the regulations of what the IRS is saying. So you can't, a project that maybe only has a useful average life of five years, you can't be issuing debt service that goes 10 years to pay for something that you expect the asset to only survive five. And so when we're looking at this as well, the average life in years is something that we take into considerations in the projects that we're looking at to make sure that the useful life is for the, past the average life of the year. So, you know, it's expect a school to survive well over 15 years, right? And so that's what that average life is looking at from a tax purpose. And Ritesh, I'm sure can talk more legally about that.
So there's IRS regulations that provide that you cannot issue tax-exempt debt that has a longer weighted average maturity or average life, slightly different calculations, but very similar, that exceeds 120% of the useful life of the project. So since we're dealing with schools here, in addition to schools, your useful lives are going to be generally 30 years or more. So it's really wouldn't, won't be an issue from the tax perspective. But I think why Laura's giving you this here is, is just to show that on the aggregate level debt service on the right side there, you are pushing more principal out to later years. Whereas if you do the level debt service where you have principal and interest equal in every year, you are amortizing that debt slightly quicker.
Okay. So where it says annual average, average annual debt service, does that mean the amount of annual debt that we expect to pay on the 230 million dollars based on a 4.43 interest rate?
Correct.
So if you take 18 million and times it by a 20-year bond, that's 360 million dollars, is it, is it not? I mean, I just kind of did it on my calculator here. So 20 times 18 million.
Right.
If you look at the row right above that.
The net interest.
Net interest, she's got.
It's 117. You just add that to the 230.
You add that to the 230.
The net interest is 117 million.
Right.
That we'd pay on it total.
So what does, okay, so, but when you say average, average annual debt cost, does that, maybe I'm misunderstanding that. Does that mean that over the 20 years?
That's what you would be paying each year, average.
Right.
And so 18 million, when it's level principal and interest, just like your mortgage, right? You've got your principal and interest every year. When you have level debt service from start to finish, it's just like your mortgage where you're paying more interest in the front and less in the back. The aggregate level debt service, and in the graphic, you can kind of see here, from years 27 to 38 on slide seven, that's pretty much all just interest in that. And then from 39 to 45, that's principal and interest. And so then you're paying these huge chunks of principal in later years and only interest. And so we look at this as what the average annual is. That's, you know, not the full debt service for like the, sorry, let me rephrase that. Your aggregate level debt service, you wouldn't be paying 20.7 million every year because you're just interest on the front end. But it's showing you if you averaged it out, what that would be. It's still higher than if you're just doing the more conservative aggregate or the level principal and interest, not taking into consideration your current debt service outstanding.
I understand. So if you, if you wanted to know the total cost of borrowing the 230 dollars, you, or 230 million dollars, you would add the net interest to the 230 million, and that would give you kind of the total, the total cost of, of borrowing the money and then paying off the debt. Is that a true statement?
It's, yes.
Yes. Okay. So 347 million dollars, million dollars approximately, right? If you added the 230 million plus 117 million, it's 347 million dollars.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand how much all of this costs us when we're borrowing money.
Sure.
So that, as opposed to paying cash for things, you know, I'm just trying to see how much it costs us. And I want to make sure I understand this. So thanks for taking the time to educate me.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
I have a real quick question.
Yes.
Back, Mr. Tatum asked earlier, what was today's rate?
Mm-hmm.
He said 4.03.
Right.
And then on this slide, we're seeing true interest is 4.43.
This, because of the board agenda deadlines and stuff, this presentation was done at the end of August. And so that's why I had said this.
That's why I dropped.
That's why I dropped forty basis.
So it will be point, four point oh three, but we're still waiting for the rate to drop now, right?
We have no idea what it's gonna be. Um.
Right.
We're, we're not planning, as you see here, we're saying the dated and delivery date isn't until March of next year. Um, so we may not be pricing this. So actually going and getting investors where you lock in the rate until March of next year. So my point was in the past three weeks, we've seen a fluctuation where when I pulled this presentat- presentation together, it was four point four three, and now it's four point zero three. So there's forty basis points less. Um, it could go up and down. When we priced the bonds earlier this year, it happened to be a very opportune time. A few weeks later, we were trying to enter into the market for other clients and the market stopped. Rates were so volatile, we hadn't seen that. Um, and each day that week when the, the tariffs had gone into play. Um, and so everything essentially exited the muni market that week, and it took about a month for deals to start coming back in. Um, so we monitor this, but this is why we like to kind of tell you, nothing here is set in stone. We try to be very conservative with what we're estimating. We won't know until we actually go the day of pricing and get investors to buy the bonds, what the rates will be. Um, but we like to show you conservatively. And so when I look at this, at the time, it was four point four three. Today, it would be about four percent. That number will continue to fluctuate up until we actually lock in the rates on the day of pricing, which may not be until March of next year.
So we could actually conceivably have fifty base and fifty basis points less.
It could be, sure.
Right. Because it's expected to drop twenty-five today or tomorrow. And there's projection of it dropping again, another twenty-five. So by the time we price this out, it could even be fifty basis points.
Yes. So there's, there's a lot of, the, the market isn't, the municipal market isn't directly correlated and tied to fully what the Fed is doing. So actually last fall, when the Fed um had reduced rates, the municipal market moved in the opposite direction in a direct correlation with that, which I think was the first time since the early seventies, maybe that it had done that. And that was basically investors saying they didn't agree with what the feds were doing. Um, and so just because the Fed is putting out information and lowering the rates doesn't necessarily mean investors are in agreement with that. And so that fluctuation you typically see when the Fed lowers rates and the municipal market would move in correlation with that. Um, in the fall of last year, that did not happen. And so the, the market is very unpredictable. Um, and especially within this past year, there's been a lot of challenges within it. Um, so that's why we can't guarantee what the rate's gonna be today. We will hope that, you know, as the Fed goes, that investors have confidence in what the Fed's decision-making policy is, that then the rates will move in correlation with that.
Right. I anticipate that, to be honest with you. Uh, we were in a whole different climate last year when they did drop that twenty-five. So, yeah. Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Just to, kinda just real quickly, just pinning off of what you, the fluctuation.
Mm-hmm.
When you go back, I, I brought up our capital presentation from July or whatever. I did find it. Um, and our debt service at that time, we were predicting the COPS for twenty twenty-six to be at seventeen million in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, like the first full year, we'd pay the interest, be seventeen million. And this is eighteen, right? So like, it's obviously went up from July to August. So who knows, you know, where we actually move and, and go. And I'll even say to the next slide, you have it on the next slide, which is, you all doing a really good job of refunding and things like that and, and you know, falling dead off and, and, and um, uh, but even like our numbers from July, just how things fluctuate, especially with, with, with debt service, like um, things change and um, they change daily. So, um.
Yeah, and so for.
Oh, sorry. Um, sorry, Laura. I, I'll just add, oh, you know, within that, so what, what will come to you in October for approval?
Before we get there.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, we're, I don't wanna get into that yet. Um, I just wanted to say for the two hundred and thirty million at the level, so where you're looking at that eighteen million, it is down to seventeen point five million, um your average. So it is gonna continue to sort of move around and the, the market does shift. So. Before we move into.
Are you looking for a direction?
Not today.
Us on level? Okay.
No, and I do, uh, you know, I know there's been a lot of conversation. And so um based on where sort of the rates move, as you could, the, you know, very first graphic you saw on the backend, they really have spiked up in the frontend, they're not. Um, that's something we would take into consideration if we were doing aggregate level. Obviously, that's, you know, a higher net interest that you guys would be paying versus just level principal and interest. Um, and so I think just gathering the board that the approach is that more conservative is the best, less interest is the best, but you know,
Sure.
Um, just will work with the district to take into consideration as well that the potential needs moving forward to make an uh conservative policy overall for the debt. Um, but if there's any other concerns or comments on how the structure would be. Um, but ultimately, when it comes to pricing, have that flexibility to go into the market and do what's optimal for the district would be best.
Okay, um, you're doing a really good job of being so diplomatic about market conditions right now and all of the external factors affecting the market. Um, so I, you have more self-control than I would have in this discussion right now. So I appreciate that. Um, Ritesch first, it's good to see you back. You've been doing this for us for a long time.
Good to see you.
So I have a kind of a technical question. You, you said that the IRS rule is that we can't borrow more than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the lifespan of the building?
You can't, so your final maturity, uh your weighted average maturity of the debt. So what happens is they'll, they run the calculation, PFM runs a calculation that says, hey, your debt, your principal is amortizing this quickly or this slowly. And that produces what we call the weighted average maturity of your debt uh for that particular issue. And the weighted average maturity of your debt cannot exceed a hundred and twenty percent of the useful life of the projects in the aggregate.
Okay. So this is, I guess, a Florida specific question. So we, as of now, Mr. Tatum's working on it, but as of now, we have to build by, um, I always forget what SREF stands for, but you know, these.
State requirements for educational facilities.
Um, does that, do Florida schools or Florida public schools have a little bit of leeway there because of those higher construction standards, assuming that those higher construction standards extend the life of the building?
Yeah, I mean, so what, inherently is gonna ex- you know, make your useful life of your building a longer, right? Because you're building the higher standard. So I think generally we look at schools uh around thirty years. So if your debt is only going out twenty years, even if your principal was all due in the last year, you'd still be over the hundred and twenty percent. Uh, which obviously you're not gonna have a twenty year uh average life or what your average maturity.
And then I guess, um, uh, yeah, and so I, I'll just kinda weigh in. I, I know we don't have to make a decision on this today, but I'm just curious what you think, uh what your recommendation would be. If, and I'm, I'm thinking, and this is probably too simple, but I'm thinking of my own household debt. So if I were to uh take on debt to purchase a house or a car, to me, it would make sense to extend the life of the loan. And then as you can, just pay extra principal early. If there is no early
Penalty.
Penalty, thank you. Penalty for early payoff. Does that same principle apply to, to cops like this?
So typically in the, in the municipal market, um and Laura can speak to this, we have what's called a ten-year call protection. Meaning in the first ten years of the debt, uh you cannot pay off that debt. So if you have maturities from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-five, you typically cannot prepay that debt. Uh, you could prepay everything after twenty, twenty thirty-six, but not until twenty thirty-five. So you, the first ten years, you, you really don't have the practical ability to prepay currently, under current tax law.
I mean, obviously, I don't think we'd be in a situation where we would even, I mean, if we're, if we're taking on a twenty, I'm, I'm looking at the um, the wrapped debt service model on page seven. You know, let's apply this theory to that, to page seven. Is there any benefit to? I guess it's page six, is the previous one is on. Yeah, um, is there any benefit to doing it, the page six model versus page seven? If we can pay it off early? I know this is probably like.
Is that to mirror Ritesch?
Yeah, I'll give it to the finance, financial advisor here.
Yeah, I mean, so the difference in this, I know that there's, you know, a lot of discussion about the potential interest costs that you're looking at. Um, we do look at this and that's the next section that we'll get into, and I don't wanna get too far ahead because I wanna make sure we fully discuss the new money piece on this. Um, would be the potential capacity moving forward as well for the district when looking at this. Um, you know, a lot of times people think principal and interest just needs to be level when you do new money because it's the most conservative approach. It's the most cost effective. Um, the market fluctuation though, where rates are in the spreads, that takes into consideration as well that it may not be unattractive to do an aggregate level as opposed to just layering the level on top. Um, but one of the things that Rachel and I talk a lot about, and as I had mentioned, we're looking down the road as what may come for you all, and we wanna make sure that there's capacity there. Um, if you do need to borrow more debt and that you're not forced to throw it in the backend out twenty years. Um, whereas if you know, you continue to layer on, um and if you do kind of hit that peak up there, it may be then that you're forced to, and maybe the market isn't as favorable at that point to do something like that. Um, and so when we take into consideration all of this, that's why we ask, when we get to pricing, we sort of like the flexibility to say what structure best makes sense based on the objectives of the district and what's going on in the market at the time.
Cause obviously when you look at, I mean, I, I could be absolutely wrong in this. When you look at page six right there, the level, and you go to page seven, the aggregate, obviously, if let's say fast forward to twenty thirty-nine, we are, at that point, if we had to borrow money, like we were closer to our fifty percent. And if you go back to the next page or the previous page, where now we're, you know, at twenty thirty-nine, we have more room to be able, the capacity, right? To get more debt if we did it level compared to aggregate.
Right.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
So, I mean, all of those things come into play with the decision, not just the pricing of stuff.
And it used to be schools always issued twenty-five years for new money. Um, and that's something that we're finding that we can kind of shrink that down into twenty years, even fifteen years in some situations. So it's not, you know, it's sort of always used to be this twenty-five year level principal and interest always. Um, and so this is something that we've been looking at to see sort of an understanding what's happened um in twenty-ten as well, you know, then the legislature going from two to one point five. Those are all the things that we sort of take into play with us. So we.
Just real quick. When we issue the, the bonds, we get two hundred and thirty thousand dollars come into our account.
Million?
Million.
Or, excuse me.
Two thirty million.
Wish it was two hundred and thirty thousand.
Add some zeros.
That comes into our accounts. We're obviously not using that right away. Where are we putting that? Right? Did the presentation just happen?
Yes.
And we're making, we said if around, you know, four to five is somewhere where we made, right? So in essence, and I'm not gonna make it as simple as this, it's not a wash theoretically, but it's very, but it could be very close.
Yeah, there's a, I thought you were gonna use a, 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 a bad word in our world called arbitrage, right? So you're borrowing.
I didn't wanna get there, right? Because that is an issue. Making too much, right?
Making too much. So there are tax rules governing how much you can make. And if you make too much on your investments, uh when you're borrowing at a lower rate, you have to rebet that to the US treasury.
Right. Which is why when you look at our portfolio, we're not in things that are growing eight, ten, twelve percent because it would be in trouble. But, but my point to that is, we're borrowing, there's, there's a diff- I think we look at debt as normal, like as normal, um, in our normal household, we look at debt as a bad thing. There's good debt and there's bad debt. This isn't credit card debt. This is, that's not what this is. This is, this is debt that we're obviously building an asset, and we're gonna have an asset for thirty, forty, fifty years, plus whatever the school, however everything's last. But we're also taking this money and we're putting it in to a, a product that's also making money. And it may not be making, but the clip that we're paying out, but I, I, so, I mean, I just wanna, I just, this is the way, like, this is how the world, like, this is what businesses do. Because they're, they don't have cash on hand to be able to do this. And so the cash that we do have on hand is a lot of from the cops and things like that that we're paying off. And, and we stick it in somewhere to, to make some money. Um, and so this isn't, I don't want people to, because the debt we're debt automatically rings like, oh my gosh, it's terrible, you're in debt. But that's, that's, that's not, this isn't credit card debt. This isn't, I'm, I'm running up my Amex because I can't pay for it. We know we can pay for it. It's just, um, not right this minute. We don't have that, that tax income, right? So anyways, um.
I dialogue with you there for a second on that. But it is similar to something like your home that, and you're saying, well, if I, if I buy, I need a new car. So if I buy a Cadillac for ninety thousand dollars, I can afford it maybe if I look at my budget, but there are other things that I can't do with my budget because my car payment on a ninety, that's whatever it is, on a ninety thousand dollar car is a thousand dollars a month. But if I bought a good solid Chevrolet for fifty thousand dollars, you know, and I, and my, and my debt payment a month was five hundred, six hundred dollars, then there's an opportunity cost. I can, I can afford either one of those payments, five hundred dollars for a Chevy or nine hundred dollars for a Cadillac, but then there's four hundred dollars every month that's going towards that debt payment that I can't do something else with. I can't maybe repaint the house with it, or I can't do the necessary roof repairs that we have, or, or there's other things. There's an opportunity cost. Just because you say I can afford to buy the debt or pay for the debt, doesn't mean that we necessarily should be borrowing that much money. And I know we've had this conversation already. We'll do that in another workshop, but I don't, I don't think your analogy is, is quite correct. Because the way that we do the borrowing is uh, my perception is we, we say, we go out and we say, how much is this gonna cost us to the builders? And the builders say, you need to pay this much for it. And then we go here and we go, can we afford it? And we go, yep, we can afford it. Let's pay for it. Instead of, as I just mentioned, if I, if I had a budget, I would say, well, I like a new car, but I need to look at the opportunity cost.
The concept of what you're, what you're saying is not what I'm, what you're saying is how we actually get to the end point.
Right.
Which I'm not disagreeing with that. But what, so I'm not, I'm not saying that what you're saying is wrong, saying, do we need the Cadillac or do we need the Chevy? That's, that's, I mean, it could be two hundred and thirty or it could be two hundred, right? Like, but I'm, what I'm saying is it's, it's all, it's all relative as far as how we, the debt service and what we get and how we do it is still the same whether it's two hundred and thirty or we're spending a hundred and thirty.
That is true.
You know what I mean? That's, that's my point. My, my point is not it's okay to spend the two thirty rather than a hundred and fifty, right? That's not my point. I, cause that's a whole different topic of, do we wanna spend money on the Cadillac?
Right.
Right? Now, if you're like, hey, yes, because I want the leather seats and I want the heated and I want also ventilation, I want the cold too. And I want the, you know, touchscreen. I wanna be able to say, hey, Siri, turn on this Ray station. So I only have that to do it, right? But the Chevy doesn't do that. So there's all those things that you're gonna take in, am I willing to pay for that? That's a different, that's different than what I'm saying, how we use debt service.
Fair enough.
The amount we use, agreed. We could talk about that all day, right? But the way we use debt service is not like a credit card.
Yeah, it's not.
But how much we spend, different story, right? Different conversation of, do we want the bells and whistles that the Cadillac gives us or Mercedes gives us? Are we okay with just the Chevy, right? Whole different story. Yeah. Which I think we, we, we will discuss, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know. I, I, rather than a, a car thing, I, we, we, when we built our house, we built. We bought the land and the developer built it, and we got to pick the bells and whistles. And if the house is supposed to last a certain period of time. So that's kind of the way I'm looking at it more. Um, you know, so because you're getting an end result, you're creating it, just like when we're building our schools, we're starting with dirt. And then we're building it and it should last a certain period of time, right? Um, and that depends on what we put into it, to what our debt is going to be. You know, our interest rates, is this a good time to be borrowing this money? Um, and, and so, you know.
And it's a physical asset.
And it's a physical, now it's an asset. First, and it will hopefully, you know, we start with dirt. Well, now we've got this lovely house and it's got a pool and it's two stories and it's great. And it's now worth way more money than when we built, built it in, you know, two thousand and eight. Um, so we have accrued, you know, value on that. And I, so that's kind of more the way I look at it with regards to that, that debt service and, and building that up. Sure.
If we could just go back to the initial conversation was when we borrow this money, is we hold it in our account and we're getting interesting come off of that, correct?
Correct.
Right. And that helps us service that debt later, correct?
It can be used.
Well, you, you'll earn, I mean, you, you'll probably most likely go towards the cost of the project itself.
Right, right.
Um.
So that's where I think you were saying that's a wash. It's not total wash, but we're getting, we're getting investment income from it. And then we're using that to help.
Yes.
Right. So that ad- average debt, that eighteen or the whole net interest is a hundred. Part of that is being paid. paid by our investment income.
I wouldn't look at it directly like that.
I know, but.
But I, yes.
It's a simple analogy to put it that way.
Right. So you're cutting down, basically, your investment income while the money is sitting in the construction account.
Right.
Is going to offset the cost of the project. So you'll be earning, you'll borrow a little bit less.
Right.
Anticipate that interest earnings. And then, if your projects are complete, as we have with the 2023 A-COPS, and you still have money left over, you can put that money towards another capital project. Or you could use it to pay, pay interest and principal.
Right. Okay. And going to the 50% of your level of investment or whatever we want to call that, but I thought it's a board, I thought there was a board policy that we don't go above our 50% debt income ratio. I don't know if it's a board policy.
I always thought we're only worried about the stat, the Florida statute. I don't think it was, I don't think we have one, not 100% sure.
Okay.
Not saying I'd want to go to it, over it anyways, but.
Right. Right.
I'm not sure. We had to look at that.
I just, we should probably look at that.
Don't think we do? Okay.
Okay. That's all. I just wanted to make that simple analogy on that.
So we're not making any decision right now, level debt, aggregate, we'll talk about that later on.
Yes. And so here's the other part for the refundings that we'll be getting into, is we do monitor for you all for potential savings. Most, if it's a public offering, it is a 10-year par call, bank loans tend to have different features on this. But since 2012, we have done four different refundings for the district that have resulted in an aggregate cash flow savings of 15.2 million dollars over the life of those issuances each. And so we would like to bring to you specifically the certificates of participation 2016A that are currently outstanding in the amount of 23.76 million, of which 20.49 million in the years 2027 to '29 is eligible for current refunding next July 1 of '26. And so with the tax regulation change that had occurred in 2017, we're no longer allowed to do advanced refunding, so it has to be current. And current means 90 days within the call window. And so that would start then at the beginning of April for that July 1 call date, is when the closing date could be of the refunding. And so based on market conditions as to when this presentation was pulled together, at the end of August, the current refunding would produce over 4.5% savings, 900,000 in cash flow savings each year. That is about over 5% now with the changes in the market. Again, this will continue to fluctuate. But we are, what we're bringing to you, that Ritesh is working on all the documents with Jason as well as your disclosure counsel on October 28th, is a consideration for both of these. So the new money component and the refunding. If the timing is right, we'd like to be able to combine these into the one for economic purposes to, you know, loop it together, less costs go into that, make it more efficient. If not, it still will be considered a separate series, a 2026B, in case market conditions aren't favorable at the time we price the new money. We don't want to hurt the savings potentially on the COPS if it's not an ideal time. And so the parameters will likely be this, though, we're working through them with Ritesh, but for the new money and not to exceed 235 million par amount with an underwriter's discount of no more than 4.4% of that par amount. A true interest cost not to exceed 5.25%. As you saw in the numbers today, hope that we don't even get anywhere close to that, but based upon sort of the volatility in the market, we like to just have that flexibility. And a final maturity not to exceed July 1, 2046, so that will keep us within the 20 years. And then the certificates of participation for the 2026Bs, which would currently refund the 2016A COPS, where, would set it that we would have to have a present value savings of at least 3%. As I said, as of today, we're at 5%. That will continue to fluctuate, and the final maturity would remain the same that's set in place for the 2016A COPS of 2029, July 1st. So any questions?
Yeah. What you're saying then is if we went to the second option, then you would be bringing in the 2016 funds that are due, basically, the balance of those.
So there, these are, we're setting them up as separate series. So 2026A is just for the new money component. The 2026B will be for the refunding of the 2016A bonds.
Get out.
Go, dolls.
Get out.
Yeah, it's not going to like that.
So.
And the deal falls through.
If we can price them at the same time, they'll still be separate series.
Jason, do it on purpose.
It just would be going to the market to get investors all at once. So since it's a smaller, it's only the $20 million, you know, 230 million will grab investors' attention, so to lump that in, and then it would just be 250 million, still separate series, 2026A and 2026B, but it would be sold to the investors at the same time, is what I was saying, is what we'd like to do. However, if the market doesn't work at the time, we need to get the new money in place for the projects, because that's a driver for the new money, right? When are the funds starting to be expended? When do you need those dollars in your bank account? The refunding, you know, we can't set that, we cannot close that until the beginning of, excuse me, April at the earliest. So if you happen to have the new money needs before, or if the market isn't as favorable for the refunding, since it's a smaller piece, we could pull that aside and say, we're going to do this at a separate time and table it, but still get the new money done for you. So it's not either or, it's just, this is what's going to come to you later. If we can get them done at the same time, that's a preference, but if not, it's not a big deal, we'll get that figured out, either through the public markets for the refunding or a bank loan, if bank rates become more attractive. But that's still be to determine, because again, this can't close until the earliest of April next year. So a lot can change between now and then.
And I'll just add, going back to Mr. Kennedy's point earlier about prepayment. So that's why we, if you look at the, on slide 11, where Laura's talking about 2016A COPS, so those were issued in 2016, we can't refund anything for 10 years. So that's why we have to wait until April to do the '27 through '29 maturities. And just one other point, as Laura also mentioned, when we do these refundings, unlike when you refinance your mortgage, so if you, you know, you borrowed to buy your house in 2020, you refinance 2025, both 20-year mortgages, when you did it in 2025, typically, you would go out to 2045 on your mortgage. Here, we always keep the same maturity, so you're looking at dollars for dollars. We stick with 2029. And there's tax rules, it goes back to your question on useful lives, because we don't like to extend the life, because then we run, run into tax issues.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Do we have what the current, what those 2016, what they were when we put them in?
Good question.
It's 36 and change, I think. I think it was 36 million or so.
36.78. Or, yeah. And these were refunding of, I think, the 20.
2009?
Yeah, we, it was, yeah, it was used to refund another one.
Yeah. So back then, we could do what we call advanced refundings.
Right.
We can't do that anymore under the tax code.
Okay. So then, so then in October, like you say, month from now, if, we'll figure out which one we actually need to do.
Well, we'll ask, so tonight is the tax anticipation note. October 28th is, but the board will be brought to consider for both the refunding and new money. And we would ask, you know, consideration for both, not one or the other.
Right.
Right.
Right. But can we do, so if we approve the refunding, but, but because we need the money for the, with the 230, so we need to do that in February.
Right.
Right.
But we can't do this till April.
Right.
If we give you the approval, you could do it in, let's say, August of 2026?
Sure.
If it's ready, if the market's right at that point?
27.
It would have to come back to us.
Right.
Okay.
And so what those resolutions will do, kind of on this last slide, you provide us, you delegate authority as a board.
Gotcha.
To the chair and to the superintendent to enter into these financing documents within these parameters.
Right.
So we have a not-to-exceed amount, a not-to-exceed underwriting discount, a not-to-exceed true interest cost. As Laura said, we don't know what rates you're going to do between October approval and March, when we go, actually probably go to market. So you provide us with a ceiling, said, hey, as long as we're below the ceiling, you guys execute the deal. If we are not, the deal doesn't happen.